They're fearing he's out for the year.
ACL, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call the city council meeting to order and ask you to all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sally, if you could help me with the roll call, please.
You bet. Alderman Iker.
Here.
Alderman Dunn.
Here.
Alderman Grimer.
Grimmer is here.
Grimmer, sorry.
No problem.
Alderman Henry.
Here.
Alderman Price.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Valdi.
Here.
Mayor Atwell.
Present.
Tom Hafner.
Here.
Amy Buckman.
Great, thank you very much. Before we get into the public hearing tonight, I just wanted to take, do some respect for our past longest-serving mayor, Ed Macklear, and just take a moment of silence, if you'd all do that with me. All right, thank you very much. Ed was a great mayor for the city of Dellafield. Number four, public hearing, A, public hearing number one, city of Dellafield, 2023 proposed budget and tax levy. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear public comment on the proposed 2023 city of Dellafield budget. One, public hearing notice, two, 2023 proposed budget. Is there anyone that would like to speak to public hearing number one? Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Daniel. I live here in Dellafield at 309 Wisconsin Avenue. This evening, I'd like to speak to the public hearing on the budget. On November 1, I attended the budget workshop where the 198-page document was presented. As a taxpayer, looking at the first item listed on capital improvements program 2023 to 2027, page 110, dams, piers, bridges, and waterways, total for consideration is $2,500, $14,700 from the city and $14,700 from a Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources grant. The capital project summary from 1322 document has $60,000 already approved for the St. John's Bay public dock. If the grant is not received from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources and if the $14,700 is approved for 2023, the city has almost enough money to build a public boat dock and the need, but they need a permit from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. The published grant application states that this is a public boat access. The access is from your Lake Home Pier, the Bleecker Street access, which requires you to be a city of Dellafield resident, and you need to purchase a pass or launch from the Wisconsin, excuse me, the Waukesha County Nagawicca Park, which collects a fee. The path you would walk on after tying up your boat is an undeveloped street. The permit application states that there are five parking spaces and one handicapped. There is one paved handicap spot and three regular parking spots marked now. What will it cost to improve the undeveloped street? The maintenance for this public boat dock will be added to the operating budget. Citizens approved a referendum to cover the shortfall for the operating budget. That was to be used to cover the wages for the people who provide services we currently enjoy here in our city. There are no guidelines for the public boat dock as it is how it will be managed. Lack of prior proper planning in regards to the actual operation of the public boat dock are very apparent. If the common council decides not to go forward with this capital improvement, please be aware that you have already approved and borrowed the $60,000 in 2022. And it would be a prudent thing to transfer that $60,000 to something of more value. If the capital projects summary dated 1322, there's a line item from 2015 for $65,000 to repair the city hall steps on Genesee Street. Maybe these monies could be combined to fix that eyesore. Also, page 110, parks, public buildings, and facilities, the Oakwood Park, construction of two pickleball courts for $80,000. Has anyone reached out to the Heartland Rec Department program, which includes the city of Dellafield and the Heartland Lakeside School Districts for them to manage the courts and the times? It could be a win-win for all of us. This rec program partnership has two sites already here in Dellafield, the Fish Atrey and the Nagawaki Ice Arena. My request to all of you is to pause things that are extra in the capital improvements for the next three years to help the shortfall the operations budget continues to have. I'm very aware there are two separate budgets, but they all have to be paid and, more important, protect the investment our tax dollars has already made. Dellafield provides great services to our citizens, and we are struggling to pay the salaries of the people who take care of us and our amenities that are already in the place. There is no such thing as minimal maintenance. So I want to thank all of you for the time that you give here in Dellafield. It takes a lot, and I know you work hard at it, so please stay safe.
Thank you for the comments.
Thank you, Mary.
Who would like to be next? Come on up.
I'm a little short. Just a little. It's hard to follow Mary's act here. She covered this beautifully. I appreciate that. It's Chloe Wan Schneider, live at 834 Mill Street, and I'm here to talk about one budget item, the six-slip pier proposal.
Excuse me, ma'am. Could you spell your first name?
C-H-L-O-E.
And you said Schneider?
Wan Schneider. W-A-N-D. You got it? S-C-H? Do you want me to go on?
Got it.
Okay, you got it.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, so first of all, about the proposal, there's a financial sensitivity to it. The 2023 budget is financially sensitive with the United States inflation rate of the highest in 40 years, 8.2 plus. Our budget cannot support this pier that will serve few people at best four months out of the year. We should spend very conservatively and also with that have dollars saved so that we can support and react to the inflation. Second part of this pier, there is authority, and this governing body has the authority to defeat or support the pier. But in fact, the DNR has the greater support authority for the acceptance or denial because the bay is the only remaining spawning space for Nagawicca Lake. The state and the city, by law, have the responsibility to protect the lake for all of its silent inhabitants, aquatic plants, fish, other plants, lily pads, frogs, foal, and so on, all of which complete the circle of life, human and non-human. The third part of this pier proposal is crisis. The city budget is in crisis. The fire department needs to hire full-time EMTs in order to avoid brownout times. Now, Dellafield residents that dial 911, they expect help. A six-slip pier is of no value to them. The other part of it is effects, what will happen with effects. First of all, you want to implement a correct process. First, you get your DNR permit. Secondly, determine the funding and the grant. And thirdly, the DNR will host a public hearing, as not the city. Secondly, the reduced fire department services caused by inappropriate budgeting will continue. Thirdly, there will be permanent ecological changes to St. John's Bay that cannot be replaced. Fourth, the bay property values will decline with a public access there. Look carefully at what you have got before you make a destruction. And with, with all my heart and soul, I just plead with you, would you please face the real facts and respond fiscally responsible and do what is best for the whole community? Please reject this proposal. Thank you so much for your service and have a good night.
Thank you for the comments. Who would like to be next? Come on up.
Hello. Hi, my name is Jackie Lyden. That's spelled L-Y-D-E-N, and I live at 1614 West Shore Drive. So I want to support what Mary and Chloe have just said for so many reasons, from environmental health, on which our fiscal health depends in this city, because after all, we do want tourists to come here and enjoy boating and hiking and all the good things you have to offer around here because of that. But you know, our fiscal health, it depends on the environment, and we depend on the city's fiscal health for public services. We just got our first ever bill from the fire department for some transport, and when I called to find out, they said it's because of the budget shortfall. So if your senior needs moving, it costs 200 bucks. I am opposed to this because I think it is reckless. I think it's just inherently selfish. It's going to serve only just some very wealthy people just a short period of time. And it's just reckless to spend on a pier and boat slips out at a time when this city, because of the fire department funding crisis, which is massive, is in a fiscal crisis. And I want to repeat those words for those of you who like to think of yourselves as fiscally conservative, we are in a fiscal crisis here. So this is hardly the time for discretionary spending on something that is foolish, injurious, and controversial. And those are rather nice terms to describe it. Next, the city, as has been pointed out, lacks a permit and seems to feel that that's just kind of no big deal. And I'm going to remember that the next time I need a permit, and I hope you will too. It's just no big deal if you don't have a permit. I've always said this is a vanity project, that there's no bang for the buck in so few boat slips, which doesn't mean I want more of them, but it's such a short period of time of the year that boaters are not out. No committee or commission actually seems to be in voting in support of this thing. Pretty soon, the former Seven Seas will be open as the Commodore. I can't wait for that. I know a lot of other people feel the same way. I'm a boater myself, so we will have lakeside dining. We will have a place to park. Finally, I do not think this is ever going to actually go through because I don't think the DNR is going to allow it, so this is going to be a lot of wasted effort, but if it ever were to pass, it would kill the lake. And so I think, you know, we have those three little sailing ships on City Letterhead. I was thinking, well, maybe we could put a little skull and crossbones on each one, and it could sail on a little sea of red ink. Listen, I'm being a bit facetious. I know it takes a lot of time and effort for all of you to be here, to work on this. My own engagement on the environment takes time too, so I appreciate that service. But please reconsider this. It's just absolutely bass ackwards. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks for the comments. Who would like to be next? Who would like to be next? Anybody else?
I have one if no one else is speaking.
Go on once. Sure.
I'm reading it for a constituent.
Always behind the pole.
I have the name for you. My name is Julie Hollingsworth, H-O-L-L-I-N-G-S-W-O-R-T-H. Address is 813 Mill Street on St. John's Bay. I am unable to attend this evening's meeting and thank my alderwoman for presenting my thoughts on the St. John's Bay pier proposal. I have voiced my opinion at previous meetings in regard to this proposed project, and my comments for tonight's budget meeting will reflect those same concerns. I moved to my home on the bay almost two decades ago. My decision to purchase on St. John's Bay was based on two primary factors. First, I wanted a quiet setting and limited boat traffic. Second, the bay is a DNR-protected area, and by definition, I did and still do interpret that to mean that the bay would remain an important natural area for fish and non-invasive aquatic plants under the parameters laid out by the DNR. The pier creates a conflict with the very reasons I purchased my property. It also raises additional concerns that include, number one, this budget meeting seeking funds for a public pier without DNR permit requires, required to move forward. My understanding is that the DNR has submitted questions to the city that haven't been addressed. It's premature to ask for funding for a project that has yet to secure approval. Two, the actual potential cost of the pier, the additional construction costs of developing a user-friendly path to and from the pier, and the cost and the infrastructure needed to maintain the pier and surrounding area in the future. As a taxpayer, I am not convinced that these points have been thoroughly investigated and documented. Three, the safety of non-motorized watercraft users. As a long-term resident, every year I witness many boats and personal watercrafts that don't abide by the no-wake restriction. Experience tells me that this problem will increase if motorized traffic in the bay increases. The bay is a popular spot for kayakers and paddleboarders, and their safety deserves priority over another pier. Most importantly, I have serious concerns about the environmental impact of increased boat traffic on the bay. I have seen an alarming increase in the number and species of native, decrease, excuse me, in the number and species of native fish and other marine life, and an alarming increase in the amount of invasive aquatic weeds. Of particular concern, the water depth and quality have steadily declined. For the past two boating seasons, the depth of the south side of the bay has been so low I cannot get my pontoon off the lift. Increased boat traffic will stir more sediment, making the situation even worse for waterfront property owners along the south side. In closing, many residents of St. John's Bay have attended at least one meeting regarding the proposed pier. The majority have expressed concerns about the project, but I feel that our concerns have not been heard. I am dismayed by the seeming lack of consideration given to the constituent property owners affected by this project. Removing it from the budget would affirm that the city leaders have been listening and St. John's Bay will remain protected. Sincerely, Julie Hollingsworth. And you can have this.
All right. Jim, did you have your hand up back there? You were behind the pole there.
Good evening. Jim Zahorek, 1948, West Shore Drive.
Excuse me, sir. Could you spell your last name for me?
Zulu Alpha Hotel Oscar Romeo India Kilo. The proposed fiscal year 2023 budget, as we all know, is a real challenge. Inflation is rampant, and we have to continue. We just can't give up, which means that some of the wants are going to have to be maybe delayed because some of the actual needs have to be financed. I live on the lake. I utilize the lake, and I can see why that proposed pier may be considered. A number of people that spoke before me talked about the environmental impact and associated with that is the ability to get to the pier. In the letter that was just read, a lady mentioned she can't get her pontoon boat off the lift because of the inadequacy of depth of water. I'm here to report that I, as long as the weather allows me, I'm on what's called a pedal board. You stand up and two little fins underneath the board propel you forward. They're about this far below the actual board. And towards the middle of August, it was a challenge to get to the pier that currently exists, and that's because of the weed growth previously mentioned. So if we put in that facility, the people that would motor to it would be exposing their inboard or inboard-outboard units to infiltration of silt and cause the engines to overheate and ultimately cause damage. So I'm coming from that perspective, that until the DNR allows us to dredge and provide adequate navigable depth, you're putting something over here that you can't gain access to because of the condition of that part of the bay. Enough on that subject. The other has to do with I'll be 80 in February. I've made this clear to everyone that has heard me speak before. When I dial 911, I want a response. I haven't had to do that, but my father, my late father, did. That was a number of years ago, and it was great how fast they were able to respond, and they kept my father living. Years ago, we had a tremendous amount of people that volunteered. They were there. That's evaporating. It's also a function of runaway inflation and so forth. People have to work, and a lot, and many people are holding down two jobs, so they don't have the time to volunteer for this very worthwhile activity. It's a public service, but they're not there. And as, as is in Mr. Hafner's letter, there are a number of ways that we possibly could go, but I'm here because my time's limited, and I request that we really investigate, even though it may be a Band-Aid, but to get more people in these stations now, however we have to do it. And as the fire chief mentioned, he would like this council to approve the Village of Okanamolak Lake kind of that plan, but not put it into use until all of the details are worked out, not hire anyone, but at least get it moving on, on that front. And I understand Mr. Hafner's position, that's not the way you run a business, but right now, I'm desperate, and I think there's a number of people in this community that are very concerned about the fact that we've had these brownouts and that we have to do something, we have to do it now. And I know people don't like seeing taxes go up or fees go up, but I believe we have to bite the bullet and protect our citizens, and that's... to bite the bullet and protect our citizens, and that's what we're all here for, is to achieve that goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you for the comments. Okay, anybody else? Anybody else going once? Come on up.
Jim had just noted something, and I don't know if you picked up on it, but he was talking about wants versus needs. My grandparents told me when I was little, when you get your allowance, you decide what's the most important thing that you want or need, and what's your priority. Several things on the budget are wants. There are a wish list. Other things are an absolute need. When we dial 911 for police or firemen or paramedics, those are absolute needs. I think you all know I walk my dog, and my husband and I walk her—we walk eight to 10 miles a day combined. Well, the doggy walks that many miles. I talk to people downtown that are visitors and that are residents. I have not yet come upon anybody who says I'm not willing to consider an extra payment for our Lake Country Fire Rescue. Every single person I've spoken to—and you all know I'm very quiet, right? I talk to everybody that I meet. Every single person has said that is a priority, and it shouldn't even be questioned, and they're counting on our common council to make things happen and to take care of us. That's why you've all been voted in. You are loved and respected and counted upon by the citizens of Delafield. So let's make sure we keep wants and needs in order. Reference the pier. There are several things of concern that I would have trying to make such a plan. I don't think we have 100% of the budget for a pier accounted for. There is a wooded area right in front of the pier. From the police side of it, I would have a hard time having a public pier in a location that I cannot see from the road. From the environmental issue, it's not only what's in the water, but what's on the land. That's a little nature area. There's not enough room for parking for everything. To me, this is a non-issue tonight, and personally, I'm getting tired of seeing it on the budget. So if it were up to me, I would take it off the budget, and I don't think it's even anything we should be talking about. There's too much money that's been spent to even get to this point of continue to talking about it. And this organization chart was part—is part of—it's on page 32 of the budget for 2023. Is this just a game that we're playing, or does this really have to do with how we're running our city? It says at the top, citizens of Delafield, and from there, everything else goes out. So to me, this says common council and the mayor are supposed to listen to the citizens, and I think there have been a lot of citizens up here saying what they feel about different Bottom line is, I think if I made this, I'd have to do it horizontally because I think we all really need to work together. The dredging, nobody's brought up, but I think dredging is important in some areas. I don't think it's at St. John's Bay, but I do believe dredging is important, and having been a Realtor for 31 years and selling waterfront properties on other lakes in Lake Country, different lakes work with it in different ways. So I know dredging needs to be done in other areas, but not at St. John's. Something else nobody else has brought up, but the Fish Factory—I noticed when we had the meeting last week, there was a letter from Langer Roofing and Sheet Metal. By the way, they're a phenomenal company. I was really impressed with them. They're like—it's like watching a Mary Poppins movie to see guys up on a roof that's like this. I can—I can walk a roof anywhere, but I would never walk that roof. It's pretty scary. In 1998, there was a tear-off and re-roof done. I am told, and I've asked to be able to view the records, in the Fish Factory on the second floor, there's a locked closet, and there's a four drawer file cabinet, and everything is very clearly laid out. I believe in 1998, it was a 30-year roof that was put on there.
Excuse me, you're at five minutes, so if you could wrap it up.
Still have other people. I will wrap it up within two minutes, promise. Can't time me. The Fish Factory had, I believe, a 30-year roof put on it, and $20,000 was paid to remove asbestos. That was a man-made asbestos roof, and there was asbestos felt under it. This questions whether there is still asbestos there, so I'd like to see the records. I'd like to know the number of years, if it's a 30-year roof that was put on. We've had wind, and there are different reasons that sometimes repairs are done, and I think this company has done a good job, but I don't think it needs to be on for a tear-off and re-roof yet. So that's it. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Anybody else going once? Going twice? All right, citizens' comments are now closed for the public hearing. Okay, we'll move on to number five, approval of minutes of October 17th.
Move to approve?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Move on to six, City of Delafield citizens' comments for anything else? Any other citizens' comments? Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. All right, on to number eight, boards, committees, and commission reports. Licenses, I assume we have none? And so I'll move on to 8B, planning commission.
So planning commission did meet, based on a lot of the things that are going on. There's one big issue that's in front of us, but you know, there's some minor things like, um, there's an update to the, uh, developers' agreement on the Hawthorne Farms subdivision, where someone at the state saw in their wisdom that the small barn, like 5,000—not even 5,000 square feet—was a commercial building, so they need access to the road, so they have to leave a gravel road in place, and they had to add bathrooms, and anyways. So that was interesting. We're not alone in approval, is really the moral of the story. Aside from that, we continue to discuss the main—the big areas along Highway 83 between 83 and Negawica Road, specifically as far as whether there—it's appropriate to pursue a land use plan update. We are going down that line based on feedback that we've heard. There's been meetings about—a big concern is the fact that designating both areas as multi-use or plan development multi-use. Is that—is that the other term right there?
Yeah.
Okay. But having a transition from, you know, the RE2 to maybe a commercial area is not giving people the sense of security they want for the people that have existing homes on the west side of that development who are currently RE2 or RE3. So there was an action item recommended to staff to take a couple volunteers and sit down and maybe draft a more line of delineation of where there'd be definitely no commercial use and maybe more definite lines for a buffer area, and so that's something that is likely to come back to us in our next meeting. So we're not trying to prolong kind of any kind of angst or anything, but we just want to—if we're going to make a change, we're going to make it right, and we're taking feedback. So stay in tune for that, as well as—it's likely that there's a couple other areas of development that will be coming forward even for our next meeting, so I'll have an opportunity to speak again before that in all more detail, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to 8C, Lake Welfare Committee. Mr. Price.
The Lake Welfare Committee meeting was canceled at the last second, so.
Okay. 8D, Park and Rec.
I'm happy to say we unanimously approved a motion, Park and Rec. After much discussion and also checking in with our partners at the Chamber of Commerce, Arts Foundation, Promotion and Tourism, a motion to approve city's installation of a temporary tent stage in Liberty Park for public entertainment performances, music and otherwise, for the summer of 2023, to be funded—the tent stage to be funded by the money that was previously approved by the council. And the Arts Foundation is preparing their recruitment of acts and performers to fill that.
He wants you to talk into the mic more, I can tell.
Anyway, to repeat in my loud voice, Park and Rec approved the installation of a temporary tent stage in Liberty Park for the 2023 season.
Thank you.
Nothing from Tree Board to report.
Okay. Great, thank you for the update. 8E, Public Works Committee, Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting, no report.
8F, Delahart, Mr. Iker.
We have a meeting on Tuesday, November 15th, next week. We are onboarding a new finance director and going to transition from Rose, who's served us well, and we're approving—or we've got a budget, I believe, that we already approved, and we're approving details to that, like salaries and such, for 2023.
Sounds good, thank you. Police Commission, Ms. Valdi.
Yeah, the Police Commission met on November 3rd, and we had one new item of business, and that was the commission approved the hiring of a new officer, Samantha Ritter, and other matters were in closed session, so that's all I can share. I'm sworn to secrecy.
Sounds good, thank you for the update. Library Board, Ms. Henry.
We've not met since our last meeting.
There was no meeting?
Not since the last meeting.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. Okay, I, zoning board of appeals, no meeting, correct? Okay, J, Promotion and Tourism Commission.
No meeting for last month.
Okey-dokey. We'll move on to K, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission. No meeting that I'm aware of. L, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting since our last discussion. We do have a meeting on November 10th, this Thursday, at 5:00 PM at the Delafield Station to review and approve the 2024 through 2026 staffing plan. That's the—this Thursday at 5:00.
Thank you very much. Move on to M, other committees and commissions, dear management committee, Ms. Henry.
No meeting, no report.
Okay. All right, nine, unfinished business, we have none. 10, mayor's report, mayor has no report. 11, new business, A, possible discussion regarding the proposed 2023 budget and public comments received during the budget public hearing. Tom?
Yeah, so this is traditionally put on this agenda in case the council wants to discuss anything from the budget or anything from the public hearing tonight. One thing that I would just like to mention, a development that happened late last week since the budget was published, is we did receive an update regarding our workers' comp mod for next year, and it now incorporates the Holiday and Shooting Incident into our workers' comp mod. So we saw a significant increase that isn't accounted for in our budget right now. The increase will be about $7,000 in tot—excuse me, about $7,300 in total, about $6,000 of which will be in the general fund, so we'll need to incorporate that into our budget approval and talk about, you know, potentially we could increase the sewer tax equivalent to cover that, or we could utilize the fund balance in the general fund to cover that. We will have a detailed memo on that at the next council meeting for your review prior to the meeting. But with that, I would open it up to the floor for any discussion regarding the budget or the comments tonight at the public hearing.
So I have a question. So in discussion about the Lake Country Fire and Rescue budget, our action this year—is our action this year limited to approving what's been referred to as a Village of Oconomoc Lake plan for 2023, and that an action to anticipate or prepare for what is likely to come as a part of that plan for 2024 and beyond mean that we move into the discussion about a referendum question and how we'd fund that future plan, but in the—in the terms of what we act on in two weeks—is it next week? Two weeks?
Two weeks.
In the terms of what we act on in two weeks, it's really limited to 2023, yet keeping in mind—which is a heavy burden—how we proceed with plans for referendum, which we need to take action on by the end of the year essentially, or by mid-January?
That's all correct, yes.
Okay, okay, all right. So I just don't want—I think we need to enter into those—my—so my comment on that is that we need to enter into that with that in mind, that this is a two-step process, although those steps are really close together because of—you don't need to—we can't act on 2024's budget for Lake Country Fire and Rescue without knowing where the funding would come from, but to prepare for that funding, we'd have to have something in place in January.
Correct.
So we're going to quickly be making decisions on the tail end of this budget, right? I mean—
Yeah.
Because I—like, so another—so sum it up—to sum it up in a yes or no question, in two weeks, we are looking to approve a plan for 2023 for Lake Country Fire and Rescue, and our worries for 2024 start the next day. Okay?
That is correct, and more specifically, you know, the 2024, we had indicated that if we wanted to keep the option of going to referendum for 2024 and beyond alive, that it made sense to go into that right away, talk about it in December, have a referendum question approved in January to get on the April ballot. You see that I've got under administrator update, I've got an item, and that's where I intended to cover this, but—
Okay.
Because it came up now, I think it is part of the budget, and I can certainly get into it a little bit now, but LCFR continues to work diligently on coming up with solutions that are more workable than where we're at right now. And I had a meeting today with the fire chief, and there is serious consideration being given to a solution that would result in one fire fee that is the same for all seven municipalities. The fire fees that we shared with you previously, that just looked at the current IMA, what the city's share is, and what the city's fire fee would be. So if we go to a universal fire fee, it would result in an equalizing of costs between all seven member municipalities, which would be a cost savings to the city, and the numbers that are being proposed would be a very significant cost savings to the city. And, you know, I originally intended to come to the meeting tonight and talk to the council about, are we supporting the LCFR plan? Are we going to referendum for it? If we're going to referendum, are we doing that through a fee? Are we asking for a levy limit increase? Based on new information received from LCFR and talking with them, it seems prudent to wait two more weeks, see how this develops. There's going to be some meetings with municipal administrators. We're all going to get together next week, and it's quite likely that we might be talking about a new plan that significantly decreases the city's cost, and that may or may not impact the council's decision on whether to take that to referendum or not. If we go in and— If we go in a new direction, and we get away from the cost sharing that's in the IMA, and go to a universal cost sharing, that's gonna take months to accomplish for all municipalities to get on board. We don't have that kind of time to go to referendum in April. And so what I'm saying is, two weeks from now, I may be coming back to you saying, hey, if you wanna go to referendum, we don't have time to do it in April, and we may be talking about a November referendum instead of April.
We need all seven communities to go to referendum?
No.
No? No.
From, from what I'm hearing, from secondhand, it's sounding like more than likely there's really only two municipalities out of seven that are contemplating referendum.
But everybody needs to participate financially in some, some way.
Correct, but each municipality, the governing body of each municipality can choose to implement the fee without going to referendum.
Okay. Do you know approximately how much that drop, fee might drop from where we were talking?
Yeah, so for the, for the high point, the 2026 that we talked about, and this is just total ballpark numbers, these numbers are in flux, they're changing, but, you know, we're, we're talking about going down from 900 and something down to 500 for a single-family house.
Big difference.
Lot of balls in the air, folks. Lot of balls. All good work, but at the same time, lots of balls.
So I mean, right now, we're sitting here, and we're not sure, should we go into referendum for a $2.6 million Delafield contribution in 2026, or a $1.8 million contribution from Delafield in 2026? And if we can't bring clarity to that within a couple of weeks, then we've got to fall back on, if Delafield decides it wants to approve this through referendum, that November would be the option to do that, because we need more time to, to clarify between those two paths of the, what our cost exposure would be. Does that make sense?
I think it's also important to recognize that, that if this second rooftop equalized plan is still up in the air, that will, in my opinion, significantly affect the outcome of an April referendum, with constituents feeling that there is a Plan B that's viable out there, just like there was a Plan B for this whole building, and could significantly affect their vote. So I would encourage that if there is that plan out there, and I know you're working hard on it, I know the chief is working hard on it, that needs to be solidified very quickly.
And, you know, again, good work, good effort, but there's a dollar amount, and then there's the details of the agreement, and the rules around the dollars. That, that's very important as well.
That's a great point, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a huge budget, and Lake Country Fire and Rescue is a significant part of it, and I didn't mean to jump ahead to that, but it wasn't rehearsed, Tom, as you know. I saw the agenda, I brought it up anyway. But yeah, we have to look at, you know, service level equity and something that will occur, you know, that's definitive, because we can't, a multiple-choice question going through next year is gonna end up with no answer. I mean, so, yeah, I look forward to, I look forward to locking arms with our partners and having a single plan that we can all embrace, and that's the only way it'll work. So, so that's all good.
Tom, if this goes to November, does that mean then, 2023, we have brownouts all year? There's nothing in, in the interim?
No, 2023 is gonna be dependent on whether the seven municipalities approve the Village of Oconnoa Lake Plan or not.
That's the only way to keep it.
So the, the whole discussion about referendum and whether to move forward with 2.6, 1.8, that all pertains to years 2024 through 2026, does not affect year 2023.
And just to reiterate what Tom said last week, if we put conditions on the Village of Oconnoa Lake Plan, and don't approve it, but need to prove, approve it after our budget is approved, we require.
Supermajority.
Of people that are present.
As a budget amendment.
Correct.
And I will point out that the other alternative that the fire chief has asked for is that if a written agreement is a necessity of the city's approval, which I would recommend, the chief has offered the solution of, that the city could make the approval contingent upon that no new hiring be allowed by LCFR until the written agreement is in place, as opposed to the budget amendment route. Thank you.
So we're.
We're on the clock.
And the clock started ticking roughly two and a half months ago, which is really not much time, considering the topics that we're trying to cover here.
Regarding the possibility of an April referendum, could we go to an April referendum based on the equalized fee, contingent upon the other communities agreeing to it at a later point?
It's tough to put that number out there publicly if it hasn't been agreed upon by everybody. That doesn't seem like good form to me.
Might give them some motivation if they knew we're on board.
And just real briefly, the 2023 plan, which is the Village of Oconnoa Lake, just to recap, that basically allows them to spend all of their capital budget, capital monies allocated on operations to get through one year with four additional firefighters, EMS. Am I saying that correct, Tom?
Yeah, in addition to the capital expenditure, which, between all seven communities, if I remember right, is $450,000-something. In addition to that, it also approves them using the $400,000 of fund balance, $250,000 of which is reserved for the original three communities, Delafield, Shnequa, and Nishora.
That's a complex question unto itself.
Nothing's easy.
When do we, are we making the decision on this in two weeks?
What was that?
Are we voting on this in two weeks? That's what, we have to decide what we're doing, so.
We're voting on the Village of Oconnoa Lake Plan or traditional use of the funds in two weeks, yes.
Okay. But we don't, if, if, if we're going to a universal fee across everything, we have to decide whether or not we're, whether we want to go to referendum or not for the fee, if we're gonna do a fee. But if we're talking about almost, almost half of what we were originally talking about with a fee, is that, I mean, I feel like most people agree that we need to do something, and now we're talking numbers that are about half of what we were talking about before.
About half.
Is it, well, not half, but it's close. I mean.
The fee is close to half, yes. From 900 and something down to 500.
Whether it's a fee or a, a budget line item, it's the same, just how you go about doing it, but the number's roughly 50%.
Yeah.
That's a big if.
My, my holdup on the refer, like, my, my push for the referendum was purely based on the amount. Like, I feel like we need to do something, but it was purely based on the amount. But now if we're talking about half of it, I, I would be less. I mean, if we're talking about doing a universal fee, which, in my mind, is, is actually just fair across the board, I, I didn't like us carrying the burden of it and having that huge number. So if we're talking about a universal fee, that's half of what we were, or a little over half of what we were talking about before, I would be less inclined to go to referendum over a fee.
And I think that's part of the motivation about why some of our member municipalities may be willing to take on more of the burden is in hopes that they can, that that could potentially help eliminate the barriers to getting there as far as referendum in a couple of communities.
Tom, if it looks like maybe a good chance it will end up going with a fee, especially if this continues to progress positively, would it make sense to consider just putting in the fee in 2023 and not waiting till 2024? Rather than run down the whole fund balance?
We're not in a position to do that for 2023. There's too much involved to put that in place, yeah.
That's the only option.
Let me, let me just add one more constraint that's still floating out there, is everything we're talking about is contingent upon a legal opinion that we can include EMS costs in our fire fee. And we're still waiting for that legal opinion, and then that legal opinion will be reviewed by our city attorney for concurrence.
And I would just add that the, again, I'm speculating, but the reality of a referendum failing in April is very real. The two communities that are thinking about it are the city and the town of Delafield. And just looking that past its prologue, the town of Delafield hasn't passed a tax increase referendum in three tries, I think they're 0-3. And that was brought up at our last meeting, and so those are, those are real hurdles.
Just, just a little coffee table math, it's 5/9ths, 500 of 900 is 55%. So it's a 45% difference, so it's darn close to half.
Thank you.
Just a little math.
And I gotta agree with Danielle, in our last meeting, I made the comment I was in favor of a fee, and I was in favor of a referendum, simply because of the size of the number that we were talking about, and feel that we could just vote that through without asking the constituents. 55% takes that down about half, half the impetus of doing a referendum. We need to talk about it, but maybe at $500, if we can get to that point, it's not, it's not as, it's a much more palatable number.
It's still a really high, I mean, it's still a lot, and I'm not discounting that at all. It's still a lot, but I think everybody, I mean, the people I've spoken to have, it needs to, I mean, we have to have our department, so. Yeah.
Just one question I have, and I'm not asking for an answer now, but what are the rules longer term about changing what that fee is if one were to be approved through some manner, as compared to the process we use today? That's not clear in my mind, so at some point, I need to get that clear in, in my mind, as to how that fee gets changed in the future.
That was very clear.
Okay.
So the CPI plus 2% constraint would go away, and it would simply be boiled down to, just like now, every community has to pass the budget. So if in the future they ask for 8%, and you don't like 8%, you vote it down. If they ask for 3%, and you think that's reasonable, you approve it. Every municipality still has a say in what future increases would be once the staffing plan is fully implemented.
But they no longer fall under.
It's almost worse, or better.
Kind of bad.
So it does not fall under levy limits any longer?
Correct.
So if the fire department came and said they needed a 20% increase, and all seven municipalities approved it, that's what it would be, 20%.
Or one didn't?
There's no other restraints on the fee.
If one didn't, then they revert back to the past year's budget.
If that's in the new terms.
Yeah, it's, good luck. You have two weeks, right?
Okay, anything else on that topic?
Well, on the budget?
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't, so a lot of people came and talked, so out of respect to giving a response tonight about the pier at the lake, I disagree with the fact that it would be a luxury for the rich. When I grew up, I came out to Naguik as a kid. And I think one of the, one of the amenities that this city is missing, and I believe it was intended when we redid the dam and put in that pier for the, which is now Fisherman's Pier. I believe it was late in, in the development of that proposal that it was determined that there's rules that you can't have a dock attached to an earth dam.
Correct.
For the DNR. So it was initially, part of the intent of the Fisherman's Pier was to, in my, in my vague memory, was that it enabled people to dock and go downtown. But I think it's one of the, one of the odd amenities that this city does not have that a lot of big lake communities around here does, and that is the ability for somebody with a rowboat or a mastercraft to be able to dock for eight bucks at the county pier, drive across the lake, fish all day, grab lunch downtown and dock easily. We can't dock in this city and visit anybody, anyplace, anywhere on this, on this lake. And the people that dock there aren't gonna be able to afford the commodity, or maybe some of them will, maybe some of them won't. But I think it's nice to be able to have a spot to dock your boat and jump out and get downtown. I think it's good for the community in downtown. I think it's good for our relations with the general public, because the state puts, the county, via the state's permit for that launch, puts somewhere between 3,000 and 5,000 boats on the lake. I think it's a reasonable amenity for the city to welcome to downtown. So that's, that's my two bits on that, and I'm a fisherman, and the, if this is to protect northern pike, they spawn under the ice, they're out of there by late April. The fry included. But, anyway, those are my two cents on that. I, I think it'd be a nice amenity for the general public. It's just like, in the past, we had somebody dispute who didn't want school buses to come and park, use the parking spaces on Highway C to let kids fish off the pier. It's letting the public use downtown and have access to the lake, and that's how I see it, so.
Well, I know you know how I, I feel, I have a copy of a letter and the supporting documents below it. You don't need to read everything, but you sure can. I agree that it would be wonderful to have a place where people could dock and go downtown. Do not dispute that at all. I don't think any of us are the experts, which is why we need to listen to. If I have a, you know, a health issue, I don't, I don't call and just get the advice from a friend. I go to an expert. The DNR has expressed since July of 2021 concerns about a lot more than just the convenience of boaters to patronize downtown businesses. They're looking at the entire bay as a designated area of special natural resource interest. The habitat of the bay is ideal for a wide variety of fish, not just northern pike. They don't just go there to spawn or rear, fish go in there at night to feed, and that happens year-round. When you have an area like the bay that has very questionable depth, most of the time, it has muck, which seems useless to me, but it isn't. It's very healthy, and we know that. I am environmental science background, I graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, so I, but I am no freshwater expert, which is maybe why I take the experts very seriously. I understand enough of the science to know that this is something that we can't just want because it's, it's a good idea. A key point that was not brought up, that I do wanna throw out here since we are discussing it, is you park those boats, the shade of moored boats directly affect the type of vegetation that can grow in the bay. The boat traffic from other parts of the lake can and will spread invasive plant species into the area. And motoring in shallow sediments, which Jim Zahore brought up, can affect the water quality of the bay, which impacts fish, plants, and other animals. It is the remaining, the only place that we have on the bay that feeds all the fish that our fishermen claim to love. So while the idea of the pier is great, the practicality of it in that loc- So while the idea of the pier is great, the practicality of it in that location is more than problematic, and I think we're, we're not being very wise with money and with the resource we claim to value. I'm going to just send this down so there's enough for everyone, because that's how I roll, and I highlighted some points, but you are welcome to read the actual communications from various plants, freshwater and aquatic, I mean, fish experts on this lake, who have studied this lake, just so you know. It's, it's not so, it's not just the idea. Nobody argues that it's a bad idea. It's just the location.
Tom, can you educate me as to our permit with the DNR for weed harvesting in that area? We're restricted to certain times that we're not allowed to go in that area, am I correct? Or can you help me out on that?
That is correct, but I don't know the restrictions off the top of my head. I know my crew guys would know that, and I can look that up in the permit.
But what are the restrictions? Why do they restrict us and not allow you go in that, in that area at certain times?
Because it is a designated, designated sensitive area.
So it's the spawning.
We have seven of those on the lake.
There are, there are multiple. Folks complain about other spots, and this one's particularly touchy.
All right, anything else? All right, we're gonna move on. 11B, approval of vouchers payable is report for reporting dates 10/18/2022 to 11/7/2022 in the amount of $285,935.06 for accounts payable and $112,203.33 for payroll.
Move to approve the voucher list?
All second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Okay, 12A, city administrator.
Yeah, just a few items to provide updates on. First of all, we're working hard with Johns with regards to the transition for garbage and recycling collection that'll happen at the end of this year. If you see, they've got example carts in the lobby, along with information to contact them if, for residents that want to get on the list for the subscription service. We also, if you remember in their proposal, the cost for walk-up and walk-down service, where the driver would have walked up the driveway, grabbed the cart, brought it back down, that was going to be $240 per year, so $20 per month. And then the cost for true up-the-drive service, like what we have now, where you can use smaller containers, the pickup truck will come up the driveway, things like that, that was to be determined in their proposal, and they've come up with a number of $23.95 per month. And they wanted to try to push as many people onto that and try to eliminate the walk-up and walk-down, but we started to get some calls from people saying, hey, what's this, $23.95? We thought it was going to be $20. So I've worked with Johns, and they've lowered that true up-to-drive cost down to $19.95. And they're going to try to push that solely for people that want subscription service as opposed to the driver getting out of the truck, walking back and forth up and down the driveway. So for residents that know they want that subscription level premium service, now's the time to call Johns. They will be, we haven't set an exact date yet, but it's going to be mid-December when they're making the delivery of the carts to people. And then the other thing that we're still working on is, our current hall, our Waste Management, actually owns the blue recycling cans and have indicated that they do plan on picking them up. I'll be surprised if they follow through on that because there's not much value in them, and, and it costs money to collect them. But, so we're trying to pull all that information together to come out with better public education for people on our website, and the other thing is going to be tomorrow at the polls. When you're at the polls, there's going to be a one-third page sheet on there promoting Johns as the new collection contractor and providing that subscription price and, and phone number for people to call if they want to take advantage of that opportunity.
So every voter is going to be handed one of those?
I'm not sure how Molly's going to have them set up, if there's just going to be a pile there for people to take, or if they're going to be handed to people.
I, I hope we can find a volunteer to hand them. We know, we know they got it.
On the way out.
Yeah, right, on the way out, on the way out.
Along with your "I voted" sticker.
Molly made, Molly made sure that John's didn't have any red or blue color on the paper, so.
And just one data point, I called early last week to Johns and said I wanted to sign up for up-the-drive. They took my name and number and address and said, you're set to go.
Nice.
It was that simple.
Okay. That's good to know, thank you.
Is there, is there, I don't know if a flyer is a good idea because it'd blow around, but is there any information that's being handed out with the carts?
Yep.
It's going to be like stuck in there.
It'll be stuck on there, yep.
Okay, good.
So the, the true up-the-drive service, the people, they're encouraging people, is it, are they still going to have the bins? Or are they, is it like what we have now, where smaller bins and?
When you say bins, are you talking about?
I mean, the carts, like, are they the carts still, or are they going to have the smaller bins, like what we have now?
Like what we have now.
So they won't have to do the carts?
Right, you'd use your own garbage cans, and my guess is if you don't put your blue can out on the day that Waste Management says they're collecting it,
It won't get it.
Likely be yours forever.
You didn't hear that here, though.
That's great, just for two things.
When the city, when the town switched, and I got caught in between, they came and grabbed our cans, and I had to bring them back. Waste Management did come and take the blue ones, because I was in the confusion, people thought we were in the town.
Yeah.
So they came, and then they, we had like two weeks we didn't empty garbage collection because I wasn't sure who we were.
Yeah.
You remember that?
I've already talked to Johns about your area.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, it's interesting, because those blue cans, they say advanced disposal, which is a company that doesn't even exist anymore.
Thanks for the negotiation on the, of the drive. District 2, thanks you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the garbage? Let's see, then we got the update regarding the fire fee development and?
Yeah, one question. What was the, the bulk, what was the kind of the, the final decision on the bulk?
So we took the bulk out of the city's contract, and therefore, when you want bulk collection, residents need to pay for that, and it's $95 per trip, and you can dispose of multiple items, so it's not $95 per item, but $95 per, per trip.
Great, thanks.
I mean, the, the math I did in my head that night was, it was around 85 grand, 85, 80,000?
78,000, yep.
So, you know, if a thousand, if there was a thousand bulk pickups made at 78 bucks apiece, I don't know why you'd share that around the whole community. I, I've never used one.
I think it's great.
So I think if you need, if you need one, it's there, you just got to pay for it.
Yeah, when you need it, there's not a lot of alternatives, but
Trying to sell our decision.
People that use it, pay for it. I'm all for that, that's great.
All right, so we covered number two previously under the budget with the fire fee development and referendum decision. Number three, just want to call attention to the fact that through the park and rec, we did a upgrade project on the Fireman's Park basketball court project that was completed here in the last month or two, and it really turned out nice. All new pavement, new vinyl coated fence, actually increased the size of the pavement so we could push the basketball court further away from the road, provide more separation, new acrylic backboards that look really, really nice, all new pavement markings, three-point line out there for your, for the long shot people, but looks really nice and give it a look. And then lastly, as we are pursuing the quiet zone for the railroad, it's turning into more and more of a bureaucratic effort as far as red tape, but shortly after we did that, we received an order from the railroad commissioners indicating that we needed to put additional pavement markings in advance of the crossing and also change the location of one warning sign. So we've done that, and we continue to move forward with that process.
All right, thank you very much, Tom. We'll move on to 12B, city clerk, November 8, 2022, general election update. 1,235 absentee ballots returned as of 11/3, includes in-person absentee voting. So that sounds good. Remind everybody to vote tomorrow. City treasurer, Amy, you're here.
I am.
We'll let you give the report.
I don't have anything to add to it, we're just waiting on our final levy so we can move forward with taxes.
Can't wait.
Are you going to be here in two weeks?
Yeah.
Oh, we'll abuse you then, right?
Yes.
Be nice.
Last but not least, 11D, council request for future agenda items. Any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, referring to correspondence, and seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 8:16. Thank you, everyone, for coming and participating.